I'd like to call the June 6, 2023, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us for our meeting this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the commissioners at our meeting this evening. I want to announce that any members of the public who use the county's parking garage or public transit to attend this meeting can get validation for your parking or transit by seeing one of the officers who's with us this evening, and they can validate that for you for the meeting today. We come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items, any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to the public comment period. I know there's a lot of folks who are here who want to comment on the county's proposed budget. So we will have a public hearing on the budget just a little bit later in the meeting. So if you're here and you want to comment on the budget, hold off for now during the general public comment, and we'll hear from folks during the public hearing. But this is a chance for anyone who wants to address the Board on any matters outside of the budget. So the time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you have any questions, you can leave your name and number with us and county manager, and we can follow up with you. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is a chance for the community to speak to the Board. I think we have a sign-up sheet. I think everybody that signed up indicated their interest in speaking on the budget. But is there any member of the public who wishes to address the commissioners on any other matters during the public comment? All right, come on up. And just again, share your name, and thanks for being here.
My name is Bobbit Mays, and I am part of the E.W. Pearson Collaborative. We were not, we did not get the Isaac Coleman grantee money. But today I'm here because of Project Lighten Up, our program of excellence, and our summer camp and after-school. We do engage with young people from all over the city and the county. We have, last year we started with pre-K all the way up through 14 years of age. We see a need that we have to keep the cost down because we find that parents cannot afford the high cost of summer camps. So we keep our costs down. For the last 15 years, it's been $25 a week per child. This year, we went up to $35 per week. But without the funding, it means that we're limited on how many kids that we can help. We, our summer program is on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. We engage in reading and math, personal development. We do have recreation. Thursdays and Fridays, we do education. On Thursdays and on Fridays, we do field trips and things of that. But that is no cost to the parents or the children. We're in a bind because we do not have enough funding. So we don't know how much we will be able to, how many kids we will be able to have this year in our summer program. We, with the after-school program, we found that we have children that are so behind in reading and in math. And so that is what we do with our after-school program. We do that educational piece because we see they need to be up to where they need. And also, we're engaging with the parents because we realize that there's also a crisis inside of the home. So I'm up here today just to ask that if there's any way that anything else could be done to help us fund it through the summer and our after-school program, we would really appreciate that because it is all about the kids and it's about how we relate to them and what we want to see them to be in their future. We found that a lot of kids are willing and they're able to do better, but they just need a little push. They need some help and they need some assistance. And that's what we give them even in the after-school program. So my point today is just for you to look at ways that maybe we could be funded or we could be helped so that we can continue the work that we're doing for our children. And thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, sir.
As most of you know, my name is Roy Harris, and I just finished back in February 40 years in Buncombe County. And with 35 of those years on the street that I presently live on. And of course, it's being gentrified and all of that to go along with it. But I just want to say thank you for what you've done. Thank you for what you're going to do. And thank you for what's going to happen as you go forward, especially tonight with the budget session that is coming up. I think I'm going to stay here. I think I'm going to stay in Asheville and Buncombe County. And maybe I'll find a place somewhere in these mountains to end my career. I am, right now, I'm on what I call to boldly go where no brother has gone before. And believe it or not, I can find those places. Those places are in Buncombe County, and so I'm enjoying it. And this year, I'm sort of taking on, I want to see how many different kinds of foods I can eat in Buncombe County. I started with a dish from Peru last night, so. If anybody got anything they want to add to it, just let me know. And that will get me in just about every part of the county as I go through what I'm going through with my brother tour in 2023, going into 2024. Thank you very much for what you've done, and thank you so much. I don't have a red shirt on, but good luck. Thank you.
Spencer Harway.
I'm a little tired, had to run upstairs here. Let me catch my breath a little bit. Good afternoon, good evening, Chairman, other county commissioners. I'm welcome. I'm here from Project, I got to get my mind straight now, I got to know where I'm from. I'm from Project Lighten Up. And one of the things I want to say is that we appreciate the partnership that we have formed over the years. We were able to help facilitate some of your goals, your plans, to bring them into fruition and reaching the community. And so we've partnered together, and so that's been for over five years. In 2020, when the call went out to facilities to provide an alternate learning facility for virtual learning, we were there. We met that call. We stood up. We provided virtual learning for 30 families during 2020, during the time the schools were locked down. Last year, when the call went out to say that at the findings of the Buncombe County, they found that preschools were entering kindergarten not prepared. So the call went out. We created a three-day pre-K program to help shore up those preschool students who were going to kindergarten. And so we met the need. We answered the call. The partnership that we forged together allowed us to bring into fruition your goals, your visions in providing educational opportunities for challenged families, single-parent families, families that are challenged because they don't have the funds maybe to, or the access to enrichment programs, not just remedial programs, but enrichment programs, STEM programs, being able to learn how to build a computer like they learned at AB Tech. Or to, during the 2020, during the 2020 time, our students, right, UNCA, they were developing and growing bacteria, which would have been a good segue into viruses, but we had to shut the program down. Again, we have partnered with you all for so many years. And so we appreciate if we can continue that partnership, and you find it some fun saying, hey, we can help support because we understand that you implement a vision that we have. We don't just touch Shiloh, we touch Pisgah View, Diva View, Hillcrest. So we touch the community as a whole. It takes a whole village to raise a child, and also it takes a whole village to prayerfully and financially support the raising of a child. My time is almost up. Thank you all. And I realize it's a hard task for you all to do, weaving through and wading through all the applications, but appreciate what you have done, and I look forward to partnering, partnering with you again. That's my, that's my speech, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. All right, any other members of the community want to address the Board about any items other than the budget?
My name's Christina Mason. I'm a resident in West Asheville. I'm here to speak on schools, but I'll do that later. I just wanted to thank you for the statement you made before we started tonight. One of my favorite quotes is from Desmond Tutu, and he says, "If we're neutral in situations of injustice, we are basically being complacent." So I just want to thank you for being proactive, for being very clear that we support LGBTQIA people. And I think that you really reflect the opinion of the majority of people in Buncombe. So if your email inbox is flooded otherwise, know that we appreciate you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, all right. Thank you for everyone who took time to speak during public comment. Next item on the agenda, under Good News, is the Kaper received the NC-3C awards. And I think Lillian Grovis is here to share some more information on this item.
So as communications, people were good at writing lengthy commentary about things. But as Mark Twain said, if I had any more time, I would have written a shorter letter. So I just want to celebrate the people who you see here. And there's a lot of people who you don't see here because they're at a community engagement market, or they're running the commissioner meeting, or they're hiding, Cassie's coming out from hiding in the back room. We have folks who are with their children. But what I want to celebrate today is that our staff is really committed to connecting residents with what's happening here in the county. Angelica and Kirby here are behind a first-place award-winning social media campaign that was recognized at the state level around what we were doing with elections. Dan Hess was recognized for his writings. Certainly, if you're an employee of Buncombe County, you read his writing every day when you come into the office. Our webmasters couldn't be here. They're one's at a child's graduation ceremony. But they put together that new tax website that really helped connect residents to that information so that they could be informed about the property appraisal process. And then our last award was, oh, yeah, Tapped In. That one wins all the awards. And that's our really cool program with WRAS that we turned around and made into a podcast. And then we turned it around again and made it into television programming. Zakiya and Leonard and Rashida are out at one of our community engagement markets right now, along with two of our new staff members, Johanna Cano and Rosio Quintero. And so they couldn't be here tonight. But huge recognition for these people. You never see them in front of the camera. But they are doing amazing work every single day, and I've never worked with a more committed team than this group of individuals. Stacy Wood, I don't see her either. Oh, there she is, hiding. We're good at lurking. But just want to celebrate these folks for all that they do each and every day and how well they do it because they are definitely absolutely committed.
All right. Congratulations. All right, great job, and thanks for the positive updates. Okay, we've got a couple of presentations. The first one is an update from the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, and Chris Smith, the president, is here to share some updates. Thanks for being here, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, county staff, my name is Chris Smith. I'm the interim executive director of the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission. And first of all, we appreciate the platform. And secondly, we appreciate your continued support. To set the stage for what we're going to talk about, I felt it appropriate to show a video of an event that we've kind of become synonymous with. So here's a video of this year's Southern Conference Tournament. All right, the purpose of showing you that was to let you know that there's a little bit more that goes into the events than just rolling out the basketball. There's a lot of activation involved, and that's where the sports commission comes into play. We take great pride in the Southern Conference Tournament. We first had the conference tournament here in 1984. We had a run of 12 years, then they went away. They thought they could find greener pastures, and it was proven that they couldn't. And we got it back, and that was really the basis of why the sports commission was formed, to get the Southern Conference Tournament back and to see it through, and then to bring other sporting events to our area to help bring things for our natives to do and to also boost our local economy, especially during the winter months and a time of need where hotels need it and our restaurants need it, and so many small businesses need that economic boost. And that's exactly what the Southern Conference Tournament does. So we kind of hang our hat on that event, and that's why I wanted to show you that video. But a lot goes into that. We have a very engaged Board, which Commissioner Edwards is a part of, and we appreciate her efforts there. We have an incredible base of about 400 volunteers, which we could not do any of our events without. And just want to let you know that we've had that tournament back here for 12 years now, and we're going to make sure they never leave again. They're contracted for another three years. And hopefully, this time next year, I'll show you a video of this year's upcoming tournament, and we'll keep doing this for years to come. But a little bit about our events and what we do. Our mission is very simple. We are to attract sports events related to and meetings to enhance health and wellness, quality of life for area residents and sports enthusiasts. And that's exactly what we hope, hopefully, we do. I'm a native. When I grew up here, there wasn't a whole lot to do. Now there is from a sporting scene. Now there is from a hospitality scene, from a brewery scene, you name it. This is a great area, we know that. And our event planners that we're talking to are starting to realize that, and they want to come to Asheville. And we're the means to get them here for these events. Our mission is also quite simple, and that is to use those sporting events to enrich the lives of the athletes and spectators in our area. We take great pride in that every event that we bring to the area, we want there to be some community give back. And I'll show you where we think there is here in just a second. These are some of the events that we did in the last fiscal year. The Asheville Championship was year two. Year three is coming up this year with its strongest field yet. That will be November 10th and 12th. And that field will be comprised of the University of Maryland, Clemson, UAB, and Davidson. That's a pretty good college basketball tournament in early November in Asheville. And that will be the first champion of the college basketball season will be crowned right here at the Harris-Cherokee Center in Asheville. Very excited about that event. Flag football, we brought here for the first time in a tournament style last year. Gala Gymnastics was here for its 10th year, coming off of missing two years due to COVID. They had 1,600 female gymnasts here in the first week in, first weekend in January. Just a huge economic impact for our businesses downtown. The Grand Fondo, an event that happens every July here in Asheville, where people get to come ride our beautiful roads and see our beautiful scenery that time of year. And a lot of locals get to ride in that as well. The Smoky Mountain Grapple is a wrestling tournament that we own, that we created, and is just continuing to grow. That was 34 high school teams from all over the Southeast, from Georgia, South Carolina, Tennessee, Virginia. That tournament just continues to grow annually, and that's in December. Again, another time of need for our local businesses. And then the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament hopefully stands on its own legs after you saw the video. The economic impact and the events list is here. I won't go through them all. But do you know that all the events that we are partnered up with are brought to Asheville in the last fiscal year brought 40,542 rooms to our area and had a total spend of 30, over $31 million? So we're quite crowded of those numbers. And it's not just about heads and beds. There's a lot of community engagement that goes behind these events. We asked that every event that we talked to give some community support back, whether it's a donation to a local charity, whether it's springing for tickets to bring underprivileged youth out to an event, or whether it's a downtown dribble that happened right across the street back here in March. So this shows you a little bit about those. We had over 3,500 students back in for Education Day this year. We're very proud of that, coming off of COVID. Kids are able to do field trips again, and we're very appreciative of those kids. And that number will grow a little bit this year. We can, we can take that up just a notch or two and have some great things planned for Education Day moving forward. 750 kids right across the street, right here in front of City Hall, you name it, and the courthouse. That was an incredible event. They get basketballs, they dribble to the arena, they get a free ticket to the game, a free t-shirt. Commissioner Edwards was there handing out basketballs. Just an incredible, incredible event. With the Asheville Championship, we had a small youth clinic that will grow this year. And then the part that I'm really proud about that event is the 125 local high school kids that participated in our Going Pro in Sports initiative. That was a program that showed high school students that there's more than just playing the game, their careers involved with sports. And five scholarships were given out to area high school students as a part of that that took part in that program, thanks to our friends of Kemper Lesnick who helped us put on the tournament. This is just a quick capsule of some of the events coming off of COVID that we had and some of the events moving forward. We've got every event coming back. We did not lose an event this year. We're going to add to that, that list, and you see some great events on there. Our July will be very busy, as you can see, especially with the Skyview Golf Tournament, which is the oldest African-American run golf tournament in the world, 63rd edition. We're very proud of that, and in fact, that we helped them out with their marketing and their registration and running the tournament. The City of Asheville Championships, both the adult and the junior divisions, helped them out this year from a sponsorship standpoint, helped them get sponsors. The Grand Fondo event, those are all in the same week. Those are three events in the same week. So we're going to be busy this summer while so many people are in our area enjoying our beautiful scenery. The Beer City Cup right there is the largest adult soccer tournament in the world. And it's so big that they're going to do one in Savannah now. They're going to try to replicate it there. But just some of the events that we have coming up. Moving ahead here, I'm trying. I think we, there we go. Just some ways you can learn more about us. You can, we have a little bit going on right now, as some of you may have heard, with the task force that was created to study a recommendation that was made by a consulting agency about our marching path forward and how we will be funded and what we will do down the road years from now. We're very excited about things. Like I mentioned, the Southern Conference Tournament will be back. They have a new commissioner. We can't wait to show him our area and let him see what we do here. Our newsletter is a way that you can all get engaged and learn, not just once a year when we're presenting to you, but you can learn year-round what is going on with the sports commission. That launched back, gosh, I think in November, or in December. And the newest addition came out this morning. So if you did not get it this morning, go on our website, sign up, and you'll get it. And you can learn all about the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, which is mouthful, but we have a lot to talk about, and we're proud of it. Thank you.
All right, Chris, hey, I appreciate the, appreciate, appreciate the updates, and thanks for all your great work with the sports commission. Commissioners, are there any questions? So I guess I have one. I mean, could you, could you talk a little bit more about the task force that's been formed to kind of talk about the future of the sports commission? Obviously, there's been, you know, a lot of, you know, questions about like potential changes to the sports commission. So, and we've heard a variety of different, you know, ideas. You know, not everyone sees it the same way. So just, could you tell us a little bit more about kind of this task force process to look at those questions and just, you know, share some more information about how that process is going to work?
Sure, Chairman Newman, I appreciate the opportunity. Yes, an independent consultant was contracted to do a study of our organization to assess strengths and weaknesses, you know, your whole SWOT analysis and your whole feasibility for budgeting moving forward and things of that nature. And came back with a recommendation for us to roll up under the auspices of Explore Asheville and the TDA, which is our largest funder. We do get funding from the county, funding from the city, and funding from the TDA, and in-kind support from UNC Asheville. A lot went into that. We, gosh, I spent three weeks doing a facility study. Sometimes we lack, we talk about the lack of our facilities here, and we like bigger and better facilities. But we did 138 different facilities that we have in the area into that study. They computed everything, and the recommendation came out to roll up under the auspices of Explore Asheville and the TDA. It was met with some angst, as you're aware. There was public comment at your last meeting. There was public comment at the city council meeting as well, and there has been at the TDA meetings also. I would say it's a room divided, like a lot of the issues are. And the task force has been created to explore that recommendation. And it's important to remember, it is just a recommendation. We've been asked to look at other models too and see what is out there. The task force is consisted of eight people. We had our first meeting this morning. I'm on that. My staff member Madison Davis is on there. Our board chair Stephen Zubrod, one of our board members, Lucius Wilson, who's the GM of The Wedge, Janet Cohn, the athletic director at UNC Asheville, Vic Eisley from Explore Asheville, Tim Love with the county, and Chris Corl with the city. So we met today. It was a softball-first topic. We just looked at our mission statement and, you know, tried to see if we were meeting that mission and see if it needed any tweaking moving forward. And looked at our vision statement and talked about adding value statement and goal statements as well to speak to some things that weren't in the mission statement, quite honestly, like diversity, inclusion. That was not in there. It needs to be in there now and moving forward. So that's where we are. We have a weekly meeting set up for the entire month of June and July and August. And then we will reassess and see what we need to do moving forward. we will reassess and see what we need to do moving forward. Hopefully that answers that.
All right, sure. Thanks for the additional information about, about that process. So is the hope is that to kind of maybe, maybe further align the differing views around this future governance? Is that, I mean, is that the purpose of it? I mean, because I've heard, I mean, we've heard obviously people who love the way it is, we've heard recommendations for, you know, change. So is the, is the hope that there can be some sort of, I don't know, maybe some other, other options that haven't been explored yet that might have greater, you know, greater, if not consensus, at least maybe some greater common ground or something like that?
Right. I think we're all acting in good faith despite what side of the fence you lie on. You just want a bigger, better sports commission, one that can help bring better events to the community, things for our locals to do and introduce some people here while creating that economic impact and that's what we're looking at. There, there are people that, that believe this and there are people that believe that and we've heard those. We've heard both opinions, but we are exploring other models and I, I'm confident in, in this task force that we will do our job and we will do our due diligence and see this thing through and come up with a recommendation. And again, the, the initial recommendation from the Huddle Up Group was just that. It was just a recommendation and that is being explored as well as some of those other models, maybe expanding our reach regionally, looking for corporate sponsors, all, all sorts of different directions things could go and that's what we'll explore moving forward.
Let me add on to that. What started this entire process was looking at the bylaws and the structure of the Sports Commission. The bylaws are like unlike any other 501(c)(3) nonprofit bylaws that I've ever seen in, you know, working this sector for a very long time where the four founding members, Buncombe County Government, that would be me right now, Asheville City Council, Sage Turner, Vic Isley as the CEO of Explore Asheville and Janet Cohn from UNC Asheville are the four founding members and the vast majority of the decision-making power lies within the four founding members and that is problematic for a lot of reasons. So that's ultimately what started this path down, this consulting work was to look at the structure and do we need to make adjustments to those bylaws to make it look more like a traditional 501(c)(3) nonprofit? So that's partially, that's what got us to where we are today. And I would also be remiss if I did not say as the commissioner, serving on the Sports Commission, it really is a great board to serve on. The events are second to none in our community that two staff within the Sports Commission are fully responsible for. So what you saw on that video with SOCON could not have been done without the leadership of Chris Smith and Madison Davis and lots and lots of hours way beyond a traditional eight to five day that went into that as with all the other events. So you all are to 100% be commended for everything that you put into ensuring the success of the Sports Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. And yes, the bylaws are a little quirky. We realized, I was board chair prior to the position I'm in now and was, was on the board forever and was on the original task force that started back as early as 2008 to put the Sports Commission together. And we've said numerous times, we need to look at the bylaws and we're doing that now. So, you know, if nothing else comes from this process, we'll have better bylaws.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, Chris. Hey, thanks for your great work. Thanks for the updates. Keep posted. Appreciate everyone on your team.
Thank you, Chair Newman. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing gun violence prevention month and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to read the proclamation. And I believe I've got some folks from our Justice Services here. Thank you for being with us and for your important work.
This is our County Buncombe Proclamation for Gun Violence Prevention Month. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans die from gun violence alongside more than 300 who are shot and wounded. And every year, there are over 40,000 Americans who die from gun violence. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries with firearms being the leading cause of death for American children and teens, with no other peer nation having firearm deaths in the top four causes of mortality. And whereas communities across the nation, including Buncombe County, are working to end senseless gun violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding residents goes hand in hand with promoting gun ownership safety and keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more than ever, is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated gun violence with more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in community gun violence. And whereas, through the Safety and Justice Challenge, Buncombe County community members have voiced a strong desire for investment in community-led approaches to support safety in their communities. And whereas, since 2021, Buncombe County Justice Services partnered with the Spark Foundation, My Daddy Taught Me That, the Racial Justice Coalition, A Moja Health Wellness and Justice Collaborative, and Resources for Resilience to pilot community safety initiatives directed toward healing, support, practical resources, and a reduction in violence for our communities with the highest rates of gun violence. And whereas, Justice Services will continue to partner with community-based organizations to support community health worker violence prevention professionals, youth leadership development, and build a multi-sectoral coalition to prevent and respond to community violence. And whereas, Buncombe County Health and Human Service Agency seeks to strengthen our communities by advancing health, safety, and opportunity, including preventing injury and death by promoting the health and well-being of populations through the use of data, research, and effective policies and partnerships. And whereas, we recognize survivors of gun violence, honor the lives lost to gun violence in Buncombe County, commit to reducing gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our residents safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners recognize June 2023 to be Gun Violence Prevention Month. Signed, Brownie Newman, Commissioner, Chair. This was really important to me personally to speak and present to you all this evening as a school gun violence survivor. I could not be more proud to be serving Buncombe County as a commissioner right now as we are committing ourselves to addressing gun violence in our community and working to prevent it. One more life lost to gun violence is one life too many. Thank you for what you're doing.
My name is Will Baxter and I am the Community Safety and Violence Prevention Coordinator for Buncombe County out of the Justice Services Department. I just want to say thank you to Buncombe County for your commitment to seeing violence decrease in our communities. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Wendy. Wendy lost her child to gun violence about a year ago and she is with a group that we have partnered with called LOVE, which stands for Life Over Violence Every Day. And I'll pass it over to Wendy to say a few remarks.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and thank you very much for this. I speak on behalf of me and another mother, Teresa Mosley, who also lost her son the same year as I lost mine. We work together. We want to be in these communities at all times and knowing that just y'all support this means a lot to us and that it's even noticed in this community. It really does mean a lot.
Thank you all for being with us. We really appreciate you. Thank you so much. We have a couple of public hearings we need to hold this evening. The first one is on economic development matters and Michael Frue, I think is going to be getting started on this. Michael or John? Okay. You're all good. Whoever. Let's take lead.
Good evening, Commissioners. We are here tonight for a public hearing on the recommended budget for fiscal year 2024. This also serves as a public hearing for the economic development appropriations. The fiscal year, this is the last step in our budget process before adoption? The fiscal year 24 recommended general fund budget is $423,560,422 with the tax rate remaining at 48.8 cents per $100 of assessed value. Budget has $404.7 million of revenue with the three largest sources being 62% property tax, 13% intergovernmental revenues, and 12% sales tax. Appropriated fund balances budgeted $18.8 million. Our budget is appropriated by function. Largest function is education at 28%. This is followed by human services at 22%, public safety at 21%, general government at 16%, debt at 5%, cultural and recreational 3%, economic and physical development 2% and other financing sources 3%. We are funding our education partners at $115.3 million. This is a $10.4 million increase over the fiscal year 23 amended budget. Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools receive a 10.3% increase. AB Tech receives an increase of 5%. Forty-five new positions are recommended, 44 in the general fund and one in the internal service fund. Eight capital projects are recommended, a total of $37.7 million. Six of these projects will be slated for debt at $35.1 million and the remaining two projects will be paid for with capital funds at $2.5 million. Community grant investments are budgeted at $10.7 million with $3.9 million going to early childhood education and $2.3 million going to affordable housing support. Fiscal year 24 recommend budget recommends five tax increases for fire districts and candler from 10.5 to 12 cents, French broad from 17.2 to 22.2 cents, Jupiter from 10.75 to 12.75 cents, Riceville from 14.6 to 16.6, and Upper Hominy from 16.56 to 19 cents per $100 of assessed value. Total of all annual funds in the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget is $603,750,799. Hosted with this evening's agenda are the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget in brief, the fiscal year 2024 fee schedule, and the link to the interactive budget explorer. Next step is to conduct a public hearing on the budget, address any needed changes, and we will return in two weeks for budget adoption.
Commissioners, before we go forward, can I ask Nick to pull up the actual item that says economic development? We do need to have those lists of items is what we need for you to hear on before we dig into the actual budget.
We need to have a separate public hearing on the economic development items. Right.
And as he's pulling that up, I will just quickly read those off to you. They're part of our funding model for whether it's a strategic partnership or just regular funding, but one would be $45,000 going to the Asheville Buncombe Regional Sports Commission. That is really for the SOCON tournament. The Asheville Buncombe Community Economic Development Coalition of $450,000 for expansion and inclusion of industry and recruitment of new industry. Black Wall Street appropriation not to exceed $70,000. That is coming from the strategic partnership grant, strengthening BIPOC businesses in western North Carolina. East Fork appropriation not to exceed $40,000 related to creation of 50 new jobs and capital investment of $2,380,000. Hakano appropriation not to exceed $192,298 and that is related to the creation of new 100 jobs and capital investments of $17.9 million. NIPRO appropriation not to exceed $180,000, the creation of 68 new jobs and capital investment of $18.8 million. And systems logistics appropriation not to exceed $100,000 and a creation of 47 new jobs and capital investment of $3 million. In addition to those new allocations, we're also looking at acknowledgement of previously approved economic development agreements. Borg Warner Turbo Systems Economic Development Grant of $80,000. That is the recreation and retention of 600 jobs, capital investments of $62 million by 2026. General Electric Company, a Unisign Engine Components for planned annual economic development grant of $268,000. This is for the creation and maintenance of 183 new jobs and $230 million investments by 2021. Lenimore, North Carolina, for planned annual economic development grant of $1 million related to creation and maintenance of 800 new jobs and capital investments of $315 million by 2024. New Belgium Brewing for planned annual economic development grant of $650,000. This is to the creation and maintenance of 154 new jobs, capital investments $175 million by 2028. And lastly, Pratt &amp; Whitney for planned annual economic development grants of $2.4 million, 750 new jobs and capital investments of $650 by 2029. That would be the capital, that would be the economic development funds that we will want you to have a quick public hearing to see if there's anyone that has questions or comments.
Should we go ahead and do that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. 5:49 PM, I'm going to open the public hearing on the economic development items identified in the county's proposed budget. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any of the economic development items in the budget? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:50 PM on the economic development items.
The fiscal year 24 recommend general fund budget is $423,560,422 with the tax rate remaining at 48.8 cents per $100 of assessed value. Budget has $404.7 million of revenue. Budget has $404.7 million of revenue. Budget is appropriate by function. We're funding education partners at $115.3 million. Forty-five new positions are recommended, forty-four in the general fund and one in the internal service fund. Eight capital projects are recommended, a total of $37.7 million. Community grant investments are budgeted at $10.7 million. Recommend five tax increases for fire districts. The total of all annual funds in the fiscal year 2024 recommend budget is $603,750,799. Again, posted with the evening's agenda are the recommended budget in brief, the fee schedule, and the link to the interactive budget explorer.
All right, thanks, John. So, the main focus of their budget process this evening is holding the public hearing on the budget. We've had a series of budget workshops and planning sessions throughout the year, and it's all part of the process. And so tonight, we hold a public hearing, and appreciate a lot of folks coming out to be with us to talk about their interest in it. So, we do have a list of folks that have signed up for to speak during the public hearing. So, in light of the really large number of folks that have signed up, what the Commissioners have talked about is we'd like to... We typically limit the public hearings to one hour. And since we have so many folks signed up, what we'd like to ask is that folks speak for two minutes during the public hearing rather than three in the hopes that we can hear from everybody. Otherwise, there's going to be a lot of people who will not be able to speak at all. Right? So, we want everyone to have a chance to speak. So, I know a lot of folks are obviously interested in the public education stuff, so thank you all for what you do, and thanks for being here. And I think there's one group with Lisa Peterson that has eight people. We would normally allow 10 minutes for people. If you have eight people, we'd like to ask them to see if they can limit it to seven minutes. Again, we're trying to... Our hope is to try to hear from everybody who's taken time to be with us this evening. All right. The first person that's signed up is Bobette Mays. Actually, I think Bobette spoke during the public comment. But, yeah. So, next person is Shannon Peale. And again, as you're speaking, you're going to get an orange light when there's about 30 seconds left, and then a red light will... And I think a beep will happen when your time's up. Hey, so anyway, come on. Thanks for being with us, Shannon. Yeah, you can leave those with the county clerk right here. Thank you, Lamar. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:55 PM. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, County Commissioners and staff. My name is Shannon Peale, and I'm a special ed teacher in Buncombe County Schools as well as a parent of three children attending schools in both districts. I want to thank everyone here for their hard work and dedication to our community. I know that this commission has deemed public education as a community priority, as it should be. Our community deserves schools that have the resources needed to serve all students regardless of background or zip code. I do want to reiterate what you're going to hear tonight from countless staff across both districts. What you have received tonight is another copy of our petition from over 1,700 school staff and 690 parents asking for a living wage for all classified staff, a raise in the supplement, and the preservation of student-facing positions funded by temporary monies. As someone who struggles on our salary, I implore you to consider our petition tonight. I am paid as a ninth-year teacher. With that salary and local supplement, my three kids qualify for Medicaid, WIC, and free lunch, and we still have to go to the food bank from time to time. I would be making over $5,000 more to do the same job in New Hanover County, yet our cost of living here in Buncombe is significantly higher. The budgets that our school districts have proposed are the bare minimum needed to give us a raise in the supplement to recover some of the pay we've lost over the year as the cost of living has gone up and our salary hasn't. One full-time job should be enough for one to live on. Public education is in a state of crisis. Our schools are experiencing dozens of cuts by attrition as we speak. Many schools are facing the reality of starting next school year with less staff than they had this year as the state starves us of needed resources. School staff are already doing everything we can, yet student needs far outpace the capacity of staff. We have to do everything we can to save our schools. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Shannon. Hey, and I'm going to ask folks not to kind of react to what people say, either positively or negatively. So, appreciate that. We just want every person to be able to address the board without having to kind of, you know, wonder what everybody thinks about it. So, of course, I know you're all going to be really supportive, but please do respect that. All right. Next person that signed up is Joan Hoffman.
Good evening. I'm Joan Hoffman. I have been a Buncombe County resident since 2005. My children are five and eight and attend Glen Arden Elementary School. I'm here today to advocate that you approve the budget sent to you by Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. These budgets are not frivolous. They are the bare minimum we need for our kids to be safe and cared for. I am willing to pay more in property taxes, and so are my parents, and so are my in-laws. So, they want their grandchildren to go to the best schools in North Carolina. I'm a technology educator at A.C. Reynolds High School. Today, I found out we are losing both a librarian and a school counselor in addition to math and a science teacher. It seems unconscionable to be cutting a counselor in a school who has suffered two traumatic losses to suicide this year. One counselor for 400 kids, a librarian for 1,200 students? What will happen to our media programs that are so valuable when we lose our school broadcast? Please don't let these cuts happen. If I lived in New Hanover, I would make more than $5,000 more than I make in Buncombe County, and the cost of living would be lower. My friend Christine just came here from Wake County. She took a $600 pay cut to be a teacher here in Buncombe County, and she's awesome. Several of my younger colleagues live with three other roommates just to get by. One is asking for a family member to donate a car for them so they can drive to work. With these additional 7% that we've asked for employees, they would still barely be making $18 an hour, and that's if the state gives us the 4% raise that we really can't count on at this point. We need to get close to a living wage. Please come through for us this year with your yes vote to fund schools and our students so desperately need and deserve. We cannot lose any more teachers and staffs to other jobs in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next person that signed up is Timothy Lloyd.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Lloyd. I am a custodian at Asheville Middle School and a proud member of the Asheville City Association of Educators. Today is the culmination of four months of work. For over 100 days, public school staff have put their nose to the grindstone towards this effort, all while still giving Asheville-area children the education they deserve. And today, they come here with a simple request of the Buncombe County Commissioners. That request is to agree to fund the asks of the school boards of both Buncombe County and Asheville City. Education in North Carolina is severely underfunded and thus underperforming. Cafeteria staff are working two jobs. Teachers are moonlighting in their second jobs, and many people have even felt it necessary to leave the profession as a whole. If you listen to the stories from both school board meetings, you will hear about how negatively the low pay in this area affects public school staff. My personal story is that I don't make enough money to properly support children, so I'm waiting on them. Luckily, the Buncombe County Commissioners can do something about it. They can agree to fully fund the asks set forth by the school boards. How do they fund those asks? One way is by raising property taxes, and I understand being uncomfortable with doing that because even just pennies adds up for property owners. But I want to make it clear, and hopefully others will make it clear, that even the thousands of people who support us agree with this move, many of whom are public school workers. These public school workers, the people who need tax relief the most, are willing to pay more in property taxes if it means that their coworkers feel more comfortable in their job. That is such selfless behavior, and I hope that the county commissioners honor that. Please listen to school staff, listen to the school boards, fund our schools, and fund our future. Do not stop short. Thank you.
All right. The next person is Paul Garrity.
Good evening. My name is Paul Garrity. I'm the Assistant Principal at Claxton Elementary in Asheville City Schools, a homeowner in Buncombe County, and the father of a one-year-old daughter. I'm here to ask you to ensure that the budget decisions you make tonight enable our public schools to pay all staff a living wage of $20.10 an hour. My school has just over 400 students from every corner of Asheville. We have 74 staff members, including seven who serve multiple schools. 29 of our staff members are paid by the hour. Combined, they share over 250 years of experience in school, and yet few are paid a living wage. This is also the most racially diverse category of staff in our school and many others, making this not only an economic justice issue, but a racial justice issue as well. On paper, their jobs have familiar titles: custodian, instructional assistant, bookkeeper, nutrition staff, bus driver. But in reality, the work they do expands well beyond the confines of our imaginations. One of our custodians has met every morning this year with a third grader to encourage him to get ready for the school day. He does not earn a living wage. Our nutrition staff see when students need extra love, and they go out of their way to make it felt. They do not earn a living wage. Our instructional assistants not only prepare materials and manage student behavior, but also teach kids to read with research-based interventions every single day. They do not earn a living wage. Just this week, four of these dedicated educators have had medical emergencies in their families. With rising living expenses, the impact of unexpected costs is felt by all those dependent on their income as the same dollars have to stretch further. Both school districts have proposed budgets that include an increase in funding to support a living wage. I implore you to approve these budgets and fully fund our schools. As a homeowner, I can think of no better investment in our community. Along with 500 families who have signed a petition shared with you earlier today by an ACS parent, my wife and I are happy to pay our part. My one-year-old will enroll in kindergarten in the fall of 2027.
Your time is up.
I want her to have educators.
Your time's up. Please sit down. All right. We're going to give everyone the same amount of time. Thank you. All right. The next person that signed up is Matt Dickens. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Matt. Shannon Hunt, and then Matt Dickens. Sorry about that.
I'm a parent, a homeowner, as well as a member of a group that is disappearing: the veteran public school teacher. I want to share the history of teacher pay and benefits in North Carolina to help our community understand why we are in a crisis of teacher recruitment and retention and why we need to fully fund our schools' requests. When I moved to Asheville in 2003, I took a big pay cut from the Atlanta district I had been teaching in since 1996. But that was okay because back then, North Carolina was a progressive state that believed in public education. Since that time, the General Assembly has stripped teachers of the following: longevity pay, tenure, pay for new master's degrees, and insurance, health insurance, and retirement for new hires. We have received no meaningful raises. The current proposed budget would give a 20-plus-year veteran like me around $25 more a month over the next two years. So, what do these cutbacks mean for our community and our students? We lose veteran teachers that are tired of scraping by. We lose new hires to states around us where the pay is higher and the benefits better, or we lose them to other North Carolina communities where the cost of living is less and the wages are higher. Teaching is no longer a career that is attractive to young adults. And while our lone community cannot fix the teacher pipeline, we can help the educators afford to live where they work. We must do what the General Assembly will not do. Surely, Buncombe County citizens can agree to help fund our schools. I will be thrilled to put the extra $25 a month I will earn towards taxes if they will help pay the staff that takes care of our collective future. If we can fund a baseball team for a man who lives in Ohio, surely, we can fund schools for the children who grow up here. I'm with them every day, and they deserve it.
All right, thanks. Now, Matt Dickens.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Dickens. I'm a Buncombe County homeowner and resident for 22 years. I have a 16-year-old child in the Owen High School District. Today, I learned that they're going to cut six positions from Owen High School: three teacher positions, assistant principal, a counselor, library specialist, or media specialist. Makes me so sad. Just two years ago, they cut several other positions. My math is kind of fuzzy. I didn't go to the great Buncombe County School District, but I think they've added 75 kids to each class each successive year, the last three years. That's 225 kids, or a 33% increase in the school census, and we're increasing the budget by, it looked like, 11%. So, I just really encourage you to put all the money into education you can. We're cutting a counselor. In the midst of the media and all the research pundits would tell us that this is the most depressed, anxious, suicidal group of teens we've ever had in our country. The Owen school family definitely had a completed suicide within the last 12... That's a child. We need counselors. Please teach these kids. Give us a good school. Give all these schools and pay these teachers. I've been here a long time. I actually lived in town for 26 years. I don't need to repair the county courthouse again. I don't need to build more jail cells. Fund the schools, please. Thank you so much.
Phil Pritchard. Yep. Okay. Kathy Nichols.
Hello. I am Kathy Nichols. I am not an educator. I am actually a resident of Asheville. I'm a homeowner. And I'm here because I care so passionately about our public education and our teachers and our educators. And I just want to say, first of all, that I am 1,000% in favor of having my property taxes raised to pay for the supplement that they need. It is of such a tiny amount of money that will go such a long way. And listening to the stories here... I did have a speech that I was going to read. But listening to the stories here of the teachers and the educators who are talking about the cuts that are happening in the schools when they're so desperately needed and they're already so short-staffed, and then hearing about that on top of the crises in mental health that are happening, how teachers need to go to get Medicaid and WIC in order to supplement their incomes, it's simply appalling, and it doesn't say anything good for our society. So, I want to say that we need to fund our teachers, increase their wages. And when we do that, what we do is we show that we value our teachers. And that shows that we value education in our society. And guess what? Our kids feel that. They see that, and it shows them that they need to value education too. It makes them realize that they need to study harder. They need to try to get into college. They need to do a good job. And it helps to raise their morale and to feel valued also as people and as members of this community. If they could be sitting here, my kids right now, and hear the stories of these educators that they see every day, I think they would feel very, very sad. And I really hope that you can change the tide of that by allowing these teachers and educators to have a raise that they so desperately need and our society needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person is Daniel Withrow.
Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value. I first heard that from Reverend William S. Barber when he spoke to the educators' rally in Raleigh four years ago when we were asking for greater pay and working conditions. Governor Cooper said that to the NCAA Annual Convention. Governor Cooper said that to the NCAE Annual Convention. Joe Biden began his 2023 budget with that, and today I am saying that to you. Don't tell us what you value. Show us your budget, and we'll tell you what you value. You know the importance of public education. It's the number-one priority for local governments in North Carolina. You know the state has failed to fund our schools adequately. You know the responsibility for funding our schools is falling on local governments. And by now, you also know that we lag far behind other urban school districts in meeting this obligation. Although our two school districts have the highest cost of living in the state, our supplements for teachers are outpaced by those in Raleigh, and Chapel Hill, and Charlotte, and Wilmington, and many other districts. The pay in our community is not enough to keep staff, and it shows. Our schools are in a crisis many years in the making. At my school last year, more than a third of the staff left. Over and over this year, bus routes have had to be canceled because we don't have drivers. Staff with years of experience can no longer afford to stay in our community, and our children's needs have never been greater. Trauma is evident in every classroom, every school, every hallway. We could never afford to lose so many educators, but this is the worst time to do it. You can stabilize our schools. You can give us the funding we need to stay in the profession. And yes, it will mean an increase in property taxes. As a 20-year homeowner in West Asheville, I implore you, please raise our taxes for this. We're paying less than almost any other urban area in North Carolina, and if that means we don't have the schools our children need, please fix this problem. I know you all know how important our schools are. Respectfully, though, I don't want to hear from you how much you value public education. Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value.
I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. Kristen, who lives on 47 Old...
Kelleher.
Yes, Kelleher, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Kelleher. I'm a school counselor and a local Buncombe County Middle School, as well as a parent of two students that, one went and graduated from Buncombe County, and one is currently in Buncombe County Schools, and also a homeowner. I am here today to ask you to fund our public schools. Our educators teach our children that they can do hard things. They show kids the possibilities for their futures, and they ignite the love of learning and discovering that lasts a lifetime. The mental health crisis is real. I see it in my office daily. I feel it, we have felt it deeply in Buncombe County this year. I am part of the crisis response team that responds to student deaths, and I can tell you how hard it is to go and sit with students when they've lost a classmate. We need teachers and educators in the building, and we need them to be funded, and we need them to be paid so that they stick around. Let's show our students they are our future. Let's show them the importance of education and that we value them. Have any of you ever witnessed the graduation walks that we hold in our schools? They are amazing. Our seniors come and walk through the halls of their elementary schools, and our students line the hallways and cheer them on, and it is amazing to watch seniors reach out to their kindergarten teacher and hug them. They are seeing less and less familiar faces in the hallway, because we cannot maintain teachers. It is important that we fund our schools, and it is important that we fund our educators for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Peterson is next, and I think Lisa's requested extra time. It has a group of other people. So Lisa, I don't know if you heard earlier, we're going to ask if you can, we're going to give you seven minutes rather than 10, so we can hopefully hear from everyone.
Seven minutes. Thank you very much. My name is Lisa Peterson, and I am a public school teacher in the Buncombe County Schools. I'm a veteran teacher. I've been there for 12 years. I've been teaching for almost 15. My son went to the Asheville City Schools, and I'm a homeowner in Asheville City. And I know that your hearts are in the right place. I do. And to be clear, it's the responsibility of the state to primarily fund the public schools in North Carolina. Our leaders in Raleigh have decided how much to give the schools, they decide how much or how little is given to North Carolina school personnel. Our leaders in Raleigh are falling down on the job, and I'd argue that they're actively seeking to dismantle public education. And some of the highlights: North Carolina teachers are paid nearly the lowest in the entire country. Tennessee, Georgia, South Carolina, they all pay more. They don't pay for you to get your master's degree. Opportunity scholarships are the big thing. They actually are passing a law so that everyone can send their child to a private school and get taxpayer money, even if you're a millionaire. And they're doing this while they're cutting taxes on corporations and the most wealthy in the state. Meanwhile, a 15-year veteran teacher like myself does not get a pay step increase for 10 years if you look at the North Carolina teacher's salary scale. Would you like to make today what you made 10 years ago? Especially inflation this past year alone was 7% to 8%. Our leaders in Raleigh tout a teacher raise, but for veteran teachers, as many people have said, that accounts to about $25 a month for the next two years. So I'm a better teacher than I ever was, but like many of our school personnel, I'm effectively making less year after year after year, where it's getting more expensive to live in Buncombe County year after year after year. And that's the state. That's the responsibility of the state. And we can all agree, I think we can all agree, that they need to step up and do better by public education, but I feel that they're trying to effectively dismantle public education in the state. But there is good news. Our local school district, y'all, can give what is called a supplemental pay to increase the dismally-low pay scale that state requires. And here's the way it works. A lot of people don't know. Our school boards have asked, they make up the budget, and then they ask you, the county commissioners, to approve the budget. This year, Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools have stepped up and asked for a budget that will give all personnel a minimum wage of at least $18 an hour, and it's not quite a living wage, but it's a lot better than it was. Two years ago, people were making less than 13. They've asked for this budget to raise the supplemental pay by 7%, and they've asked for this budget to avoid further personnel cuts. And it has come to my attention that you, the county commissioners, have not granted that request. You are not fully funding what the Buncombe County Schools and the Asheville City Schools' Board of Educations have asked for. In fact, if my calculations are correct, you've funded the school ask by 25% of what they've asked. Now, we're not asking for the moon. We're not asking to be rich. We're asking for the basics. We're asking to stem the flow of people leaving. We're asking to make a pay scale so that we can bring people in. Recruitment and retention has been said over and over to be a very high priority of the school systems in the county, but we're not doing it. We're asking you to be on our side. People are leaving the profession. People are moving to work in other states and in other North Carolina counties. Students are not entering the college to go into teaching, and why would they? If I had a child who wanted to be a teacher, and thank goodness my child doesn't, I would say, no, don't do it. Don't do it. I love my job. I love teaching. There's such joy in it. Of course we do. We don't want to get rich. It's not about that. It's about having our respect, because we are in a crisis. We hear this from all directions. And yes, we are experiencing an opioid crisis, we are experiencing a housing crisis, we are experiencing water and other infrastructure crises, but if you lose the teachers and the people who work in the schools, it is over. What do you think will happen to these other crises when the public schools lose all these personnel? Because we're not treating our school personnel right. When we don't do that, we don't do right by our children, our future community members. People, like I said, don't go into the schools to get rich, but it's not a volunteer position, and we're going backward in pay, and we're being taken advantage of. I often compare it to a bad marriage. We stay in it for the kids. Been treating wrong, but we're staying in it for the kids, but we can't hold on forever. When we know the leaders in Raleigh are against us, when do we start considering ourselves too foolish to stay in this profession, to stay in this county? I make a T-grat all the time, and I say, why would I stay and why would I go? Why would I stay? Because I love it here. I got friends, I got family, I've got a beautiful house, I live in a beautiful, amazing place, I live in a beautiful community, the people I work with are wonderful, amazing human beings, I love my children, and I am such a good teacher. They want to keep me here. But every single day, I feel like a fool. I feel taken advantage of, and I want to stay. And when you fund us at 25% of our ask, it makes me go, not even my own county. Not even my own county is on my side. How do we justify staying? I got to tell you a little story. My aunt's partner out in Old Fort and my father were talking about taxes. And they were talking for a while, and Merrill, he says, that's my aunt's ex-partner, he says, you know, oh, your taxes aren't that bad. And my dad, who's from Jersey, is like, oh, your taxes aren't that bad? What are we talking about here? We found out my dad was talking about a month of taxes, and Merrill was talking about a year of taxes. We are so undertaxed that when people move down here and take their money and they buy these million-dollar houses, and you've seen the housing prices in North Carolina, in Asheville, and in Buncombe County, when they buy those houses, and they're like, oh, this is great, I don't pay any taxes, that's because you're not funding the firefighters, you're not funding the police, and you're not funding the schools. And that's your future, and that's your community, that's the children who you're going to live amongst when they grow into adults. Those are the people that hopefully will take care of you in the hospitals, those are the people who will hopefully take care of you as future teachers. But at this point, I say, do not go into public education until you start treating us right. And I think you can, and I think you will, and I really hope you will. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Next person is Abby Hesling.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Abby Hesling, and I teach at Irwin High School. I have been at Irwin for 14 years after doing my student teaching there, and I choose to stay at Irwin because I truly love my community, and I love my school, and I love my students. My goal is to retire from Irwin, but I'm now having to consider whether or not that is an option for me. Raising a family in this town on a teacher's salary is becoming more and more difficult every year. I'm one of the veteran teachers that others have spoken about, and my cohort is shrinking every day. This has been the hardest year of my career after 14 years. It was not the year that we were in lockdown. It was not the year we came back from lockdown. It was not fighting with the masks. It was this year. There is a very real crisis in our schools. As we wrap up our end-of-the-year testing, we are all very demoralized as we walk around the building and we hear about more and more teachers that are leaving, more and more positions that are getting cut, and we think about how hard next year will be. During my time at Irwin, we have had so much turnover, and the facts are very obvious. Obviously, when teachers leave and new hires come in, there is training and a learning curve which takes a toll on everyone in the building. But for our students, it is much more than that. Our students, especially in my community, do not have a lot of consistency in their lives, and many come to school for just that stability. They look for teachers that they have already built a connection with. I have students that I do not currently teach that hang out in my room before school, another group that comes in after school, and a third group that comes to eat lunch with me every single day. They are not going to seek out those connections when, I'm sorry, I got distracted by the time. They seek us out because we feel safe, and when those connections leave the building, the connection the students feel to the building also leaves. Public education is under attack in a lot of ways right now, and our students are under attack as well. They feel the pervasive perception that education isn't valued, their schools are not adequately funded, and their teachers are overworked and overwhelmed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matthew Leggett.
Hello, my name is Matt Leggett, and I thank you for your time and your attention. I teach social studies at Montford North Star Academy, and I'm going to go back to the year 1945, and Franklin Delano Roosevelt passed away, and a guy named Harry Truman became president, and he put a little desk plaque on his desk saying, "The buck stops here." And he wanted to remind himself every day that it was up to him to make the hard choices. The state of North Carolina has failed us. As a teacher, I'm going to give them an F. And if I could, I'd put them in lunch detention too, but I can't. But I'm asking you guys to do the right thing, and I think you know what it is. This is an expensive city to live in. I was fortunate enough to move here with my lovely wife when Asheville was a really inexpensive place to live. We got our first house in worst Asheville because it was cheap. That tells you how long ago that was. I will gladly pay more property tax. The reality is, for my house right now, I'm probably looking at paying, hold your breath, up to a whopping $14 a month in property taxes to make these things happen for public education. Now, understand, if you live in North Asheville, it may be a little more. But we need you guys to do the right thing. We have watched the ball go back and forth from the state to local, back and forth. Someone pick the ball up and do what is right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Maggie Moore.
Hey, my name is Maggie Moore, and I'm here to advocate for full public school funding. I am one of two media coordinators at Reynolds High School, and I love my job. It's my favorite job that I've ever had. I love going to work today, which I can't say for, I mean, all of the jobs I've had before now. I work with another professionally-certified media coordinator and a media assistant to meet the needs of 1,100 students and fellow teachers. And I mean it when I say that all hands are on deck every day to meet the variety of issues that come our way. We're a dream team. I mean, we handle book circulations, recommendations, technology inventory, collection development, tech repairs, so much stuff. We work together, and I wouldn't have it any other way. But I found out yesterday morning, per a superintendent's directive, that my position is being eliminated at the end of this year. So I have my dream job. I've had it for a year. I'm a first-year teacher, so I'm not making that much money, but I love what I do, and I'm devastated. I'm devastated. And to hear like, this is a meeting to discuss like final budget recommendations, my job has already been cut because our superintendent doesn't think the funding will be there to pay, or to justify paying my tiny little budget or my tiny little salary. It's devastating. I'm heartbroken. So working as a media coordinator involves a lot more than many would assume, and at the high school level, there are two media coordinators and one media assistant. And so the second media coordinator position has been cut across the board at all high schools in Buncombe County. So that means these dream teams who have worked together to meet their students' needs, they are losing half of their team. And we do, just this past year, we have submitted 977 tickets for tech repairs, not counting what we've done, circulated 4,721 books, taught 219 classes in the library, and they're limiting that to one professionally-certified librarian and media assistant who won't be able to do as much clearly by themselves. I'm desperately hopeful that the decision will be reversed in terms of my position, and just advocating for full funding of public school budget. Okay, thank you so much.
Christina Mason.
I'm Christina Mason, a homeowner, a parent, and I have a son who's a kindergartner in Asheville City Schools. I urge you to fully fund the proposed budgets. Functional public schools are a must-have, they're not a nice-to-have. And isn't it weird that we're coming to you as your constituents, asking you to raise taxes? That's not a good sign. There's no debating that inadequate school funding is hurting morale, it's hurting enrollment and recruiting, it's hurting the amazing humans educating our kids, and it's hurting our students. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I know you have a ton of issues on your plate, and you're looking for solutions and enough money to pay for all of them, but as Lisa already described, education is core to addressing those. Public schools are unique places where families of all backgrounds and incomes can build community, where diversity, equity, and inclusion are explicit values. Public education is the foundation of a healthy democracy. Schools are where we're teaching history and civics and science is still taught. You can't tackle the problems that we're facing in Buncombe without public education. Our public schools are facing impossible choices. If you don't fully fund these budgets, we'll have no choice but to increase class sizes, cut student-facing positions, leave vacancies unfilled, and continue paying poverty wages and being unable to recruit. We aren't giving our children the education that they deserve. Families are not going to stick around long. Parents like me, who have the privilege to choose, are going to head for charter and private schools. Austerity is cutting public schools off at the knees. I've got five ideas for raising school funding. One, restore the Asheville City Schools' supplemental tax to pre-pandemic levels of 12%. It's unconscionable to keep that rate flat. Two, raise property taxes. I'm willing, my friends are willing, my neighbors are willing, we see it as an investment in our community. Three, reform the property assessment system. Three, reform the property assessment system so that undervalued parcels are a source of more tax revenue. Correct the system so that everyone pays their fair share. We know that this has been a problem, and we can fix it. Reduce the hotel occupancy tax to zero and mandate that a portion of taxes raised for tourism be allocated for public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke Heaton.
Good evening. My name is Brooke Heaton, and I am the father of a kindergartner in Asheville City Schools. I'm the parent of a public school student because I myself am the product of public education. When it came time to enroll our son in school, we had no doubt that it would be in a public school. It was a public school that first introduced me to kids that were entirely unlike me, with backgrounds that were a strong contrast to my own small-town Iowa origins. From kindergarten through high school, it was in public schools that I came to understand the world I lived in through the eyes of others because we were all thrown into a sometimes chaotic melting pot with pizza on Fridays. While I have fond memories of my own education, I see changes happening in our society. Public schools are under assault across our nation, but especially here in North Carolina. The General Assembly is working daily to undermine our public schools with desperately small budgets, resulting in massive turnover. Our kids need to be taught by teachers who are passionate and feel valued, who can afford to live where they teach. Yet we've got veteran teachers who haven't seen a raise in a decade. A decade. Think about that. Public schools are critically important to our community. I know you're dealing with a litany of challenges, but the education of our kids is not a single issue on a long list of priorities. It is the central pillar of our community. For many, a public education is the only path to economic opportunity. It provides a way for people like myself to be the first in their family to go to college, earn a degree, start a business. Lacking sufficient school funding, our kids will lose that opportunity. And it's not just a matter of equity. It's a matter of the economic well-being of our community. I ask that you consider what the teachers and staff here are asking for, and please show that you value them. Please fully fund our schools. You must find a way. As I speak, the fundamental fabric of our society is being torn at the seams with attacks on various communities. And anything and everyone that promotes fairness, equity, and justice is a target. Don't let them win. Demand that our schools be thriving places where kids of all walks of life learn from valued teachers who can afford to live in their community. Please approve the requested buzzards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Samantha Gollman.
Hello, Samantha Gollman from the Owen District. The students in my community, the Owen District, deserve every educational opportunity offered to students in any other district and access to adequate services. As we lose positions, and Owen is being told that we're losing possibly six positions this year, in addition to positions we've already lost in the last couple of years, our students are losing those opportunities. We are not providing an equitable education in our own district. So how can we be complying with Leandro? If a student can take a course at AC Reynolds High School but can't take that course at Owen High School, then how are we serving our students equally? How is that fair? We're losing CTE positions. We're losing electives that help our students be career-prepared. Our students at Owen High School don't have the offerings that other students have. We can't just keep cutting positions according to ADM. We have to serve all of our students and provide equity of access to our students. I want transparency when it comes to decisions regarding staffing. We just found out yesterday that other positions are being cut. Why now, when other positions were announced earlier? Why, when we barely had time to prepare for this meeting and figure out what the concerns were and what was the reality? That does not build public trust. When back in May, when we presented to the school board, we were hearing that that was not the plan. It wasn't the plan to have cuts in our schools. I have no interest in being part of a gilded age of public education. We have to be strong at our core. We can't just look pretty on our face and on our websites. We have to teach our kids with strength. We have to prepare them.
Okay, next is Nicole Washburn.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicole Washburn, and I teach science at Nesbit Discovery Academy. I've lived in Asheville for 18 years now, and I have three children of my own, 13, 16, 19, all of whom have been, who have been or currently are educated in Buncombe County schools. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Biology, a minor in Education, and I have a Master's Degree in Secondary Science Education. My very first year of teaching was in 1996, 27 years ago. As a new teacher in my early twenties, I knew that my salary would not be high, but honestly, that was true for many careers requiring college degrees at that time. My husband made about the same as I did, for example. Now, almost 30 years later, with over 16 years of experience in public education, I do not make significantly more than I did then, just a few thousand dollars. Most professional careers that require college degrees make much more than professional educators do. This makes it difficult to attract qualified, talented people to the profession. There are many educators here today and currently teaching in Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools in the same situation I just described. They have many years of experience. They excel at designing exciting and engaging lessons, giving valuable feedback on the progress of their students, communicating with parents and other educators, and so much more. Many, though, are retiring this year or in the next few years. We must do something immediately. There are not enough young teachers to replace them. Why am I focusing on the salary alone to keep and get talented teachers? First, it's very low. North Carolina's teacher salaries are in the bottom fourth of all states. It's particularly low in Asheville, as you've heard, due to the high cost of living. It's nearly impossible to live here on a teacher's salary. Because of this, not only are we not attracting new teachers, but we're losing excellent and experienced teachers faster than we can replace them. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a teacher at Nesbit Discovery Academy, our local public STEM-focused high school. We have all probably heard that STEM careers are steadily increasing. According to the National Science Foundation, fully 23%, almost 1 in 4 new jobs are currently STEM-related. As a STEM high school, our school has some unique characteristics, but it's not unique. STEM curricula is all over our county. All of our schools teach it and encourage it. In our school alone, we've lost two teachers in STEM fields that we cannot replace.
Next is Soren Peterson.
Hello, my name is Soren Peterson. I am here also to request the fully funding of the budget. I wanted to put some numbers behind what the request being made is. We know that it's a 7% supplemental increase, but what does that actually amount to? The last time the local supplement was increased was in 2018. Since then, teachers have seen, new teachers have seen a 6% increase in their salary to this year. With the supplement increase, that number is 19% over a six-year period. In that same time, inflation will have gone up 26%. And the cost of living in the Asheville metro area, which includes the cheaper Henderson and Madison Counties, will have gone up 94%. It will have nearly doubled. A new teacher, after you account for that cost of living, will be making $8,000 less after inflation than they would have six years ago, 28 versus 36,000. And put another way, new teachers will be asked to pay 36% of their income towards the cost of renting a one-bedroom apartment. If we want to invite teachers here who want a family or have a child, we're looking at them paying over half of their salary towards renting a room. Saying that this is an increase in teacher pay, I think, does not reflect on what is being asked for. This is a request to slow down the bleeding that is facing Buncombe County and our surrounding areas. When the cost of inflation and the cost of living is so quickly outstripping what teachers are being asked to pay, we are making the request of those teachers to be willing to have their salary cut when it is the job of the county in which the cost of living is so rapidly rising to help offset that cost. So I ask again, pay for this budget. It helps us all. Thank you.
Lee Barrett. Is Lee still here? We'll come back to Lee if Lee shows up. Tepi Asibo.
I have my readers on, so you folks are a bit blurry up there. I thought about talking about the numbers like Soren did. And I have to say that for me, the extra, I think it's something like 5.8 cents per hundred dollars to fund the requests other than the school tax, and 1.38 about cents to fund the request for the school tax. I ask you to approve it. Telling you about, like, Brownie. I've known you since you were, what, a sophomore in college? And I know where your heart is. Al Whitesides. I love hearing about our past and talking about our possibilities for our future and about our problems that we have here in our Asheville City Schools and in our community. Jasmine, I just, I'm so grateful for the work that so many of you do. My kiddo is struggling. And instead of talking about all the big-picture stuff, in two days, my kiddo, I'm expecting to be able to come home for the first time in a couple months. And they need resources that our schools are really starving with. We have kids attending our schools who are suffering from mental illness, suicidality, self-harm. And that, I have spent over $100,000 this past year trying to meet those needs. And if I can spend $300 more in taxes so that our schools don't crumble and my kid can go back, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Amy Ray.
Good evening. I'm Amy Ray. I'm a member of the Asheville City School Board. I am also grateful to have been a parent of students in Asheville City Schools for the last 20 years, with eight more to go. I have to confess that I entered into this budget process not expecting to submit to you the size of the budget request that we have submitted. During the campaign process and in speaking with some of you, and also acknowledging that we have a relatively high-per-student amount of funding, I was asking and did ask for recommendations for reductions, and I got those recommendations. And I looked at those, and I thought, okay, what can we do here? What I also know, from my own experience as a parent, and then from countless hours with staff, educators, assistants, everyone, is that our schools post-pandemic are not what they were before. They are facing many, many extra challenges. And those challenges, if you looked back, if you've been in our schools in 2019, you don't know what a kindergarten classroom looks like right now. It's different. The needs are greater, and they're pretty dire. And so when faced with the question of whether I would recommend and vote in favor of a budget recommendation, that meant that we had fewer adults in our schools to help with those needs, I couldn't do it. So we have recommended a budget that includes over $1 million of reductions. But I couldn't bring myself to vote in favor of a budget that reduced the loving adults that are in our schools right now. I will tell you that we haven't, in the six months that the new board has been in place, been able to address some of the bigger challenges that we have. We acknowledge that we have a decreasing enrollment and that we are going to have to look at our facilities and other needs. And we will be here in a year in very different circumstances, and I can assure you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hassel. Eden Ward.
Hi, my name is Eden Ward. I am 11 years old and in fifth grade at Claxton Elementary. And I am on Claxton Student Leadership Team, which is focused on making Claxton a better place. And I have to say, the students at Claxton can see, and in Asheville City Schools, we can all see, things are getting bad. Like, we can see the teachers are starting to lose it. And it's like, if they didn't know what was going to happen to the students, I think they would just walk out. And I think if this gets passed, I really do think that the teachers are going to, like, really just, they're gonna lose it, for real. And I think that, if we're getting to this point, then something definitely needs to be done to stop this because this is like at a point where, like, teachers aren't staying for more than a year now. It's like, they see the school system, and they see what's happening to the other teachers. And they, I feel like it's partly that, but it's partly they don't want to get too connected to their students, and they don't want to be too reluctant to leave. Because they, if they get too attached, then they will suffer like the rest of the teacher. And I feel like that is really, really hurtful to this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eden. The last person that signed up is Christina De Los Santos.
Hi, my name is Christina De Los Santos, and my two children, Simon and Isaac, attend Asheville High. My older son, Simon, who has autism, will be graduating from the Occupational Course of Study Program this Saturday. Simon has a 4.0 GPA. He's worked as a coach's assistant, and he's been able to be included in general education courses and electives. Simon is a very hard worker, but his success at Asheville High would not have been possible without the support of his incredible EC teachers. Special shout-out to Liz LeBlu, Brian Billick, Emrick Van Oostal, and Instructional Assistant Extraordinaire Lauren Kay, aka Coach Kay. Recently, I asked Coach Kay for a list of the teachers, assistants, and therapists who have been instrumental in Simon's school experience this term so we could get them gifts for Teacher Appreciation Week. Simon is taking three classes this semester, and she sent me a list of 11 people. These folks have frequently gone above and beyond their job descriptions to make sure my child can live up to his potential and be included, when appropriate, with typically developing peers, many of whom he now counts as friends. They have gone so far as to declare Thursday's Yellow Day because it is Simon's favorite color, and they show up decked out in yellow every week. These educators are my family's heroes, and they are, and they at the very least deserve to be paid a fair wage. As a homeowner, I would happily pay an additional $42 per month to ensure that my children and our entire community's children have fully-staffed schools that can meet their needs. I also want to ask that you consider creating an advisory council for exceptional children and student support services so that these dedicated educators, who really understand the needs of these kids, can lend their expertise to the development of solutions for these services. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Yes, you can. Are you Lee? Are you Lee? I'm sorry, what was your name?
Mike Mitchell.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a parent at Hawk Creek Elementary, and I've been an active member of the PTA there for the last six years. I served as treasurer for two years. I'm also a local business owner. And I also, as everybody else has spoken, support the full budget for schools. It's very, very critical. My daughter, who is the same age as Eden, who might have left the room, she feels it. She's going into middle school next year. My son's going into fourth grade, and I'm nervous about fifth grade for him. Fifth grade was really terrible this year. We had teachers leave, staff leave, parents, families leave, go to charter schools, private schools. Public funding is leaving the schools. It's not just teachers wanting extra money. This is critical. It's a foundation of our community. And if there's any way that you can raise property taxes to meet the request of our school boards, please do so. It's not too late. You haven't voted on it yet. It's not too late. You haven't voted on it yet. Please consider that. You know, Governor Cooper recently spoke about this being a crisis in our state. If you look across for parity, some of the state senators are asking for parity in pay. Look at teacher pay across, across the nation. We are not anywhere near. Money can be raised. Taxes can be increased. It is critical for our community. As a business owner, I have trouble attracting people to the community and hiring them because cost of living, inflation. Our teachers are not getting paid nearly what some of the people that will be working at my company get paid. And trying to attract families to come work for me is difficult. We want valuable teachers to come here and be able to live here in this beautiful city and county.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna hear from everyone who wants to speak. Yep, we're through with everyone who's signed up, but anybody who wants to speak can. Come on up. Yep, thanks.
Hi, I am Everett Leggett. I am in 10th grade at Asheville High. I'm the child of a public school teacher and I, and I've seen my dad go, go above and beyond in his work. But then he'll come home and he's completely exhausted. And I've seen this with many teachers. But I've seen so many teachers leave teaching because they simply cannot live in Asheville with the current salary of school staff. Or because they're simply burnt out from working multiple jobs just so they can live in Asheville. We have amazing teachers and school staff in Asheville that have made huge impacts on my life and so many other students' lives. Teachers that are putting in 200% to make students' lives better, but they can't continue to do that when they are burnt out from working a second job or constantly worrying about being able to pay bills. So if you want school staff to be, to keep giving their all, they need to be, they need to be paid what they are worth, which is way more than what they are being paid now. Your choices today affect my future. Thank you.
Thanks, Everett. All right, anyone else? Ms. Chuter's board. Yep.
Hello, my name is JP Bolick and I'm a Reverend at Central United Methodist Church. And I love Asheville and Buncombe County. And only giving a pastor two minutes is kind of an unforgivable sin in my mind. All seriousness, I didn't plan to come to talk about the school board or anything or schooling. But I do, would like to say that it's always a wise investment to invest in children. The main reason I came was because a friend asked me to come by and simply want to publicly state that, and ask that the East End, Shiloh, Emma, and Burton Street Community Neighborhoods receive the financial support that they need to do the works within their communities. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, please come up.
Hi, I'm Kansley Herbst. I teach first grade at Isaac Dixon. I was not planning on speaking, but you guys had some extra time, so I figured why not. I have a lot I could talk about. So I'll just do a little, I guess. I mean, at Isaac Dixon, we lost, I think Daniel Withrow said like a third. It was really like half of our classroom teachers left last year. We're looking about the same number again this year, the majority of whom, because they are moving and they are leaving Asheville, they are leaving North Carolina. Two of the classrooms had long-term subs for the majority of the year. The classroom right next to me that taught first grade, and I think they had an EC cluster, so students that need the most support and services had a long-term sub. They did not have an instructional assistant. Then they got an instructional assistant halfway through the year. And then she left because she wasn't paid enough. And then they got a new teacher who is great, came from Maine, and she's leaving again, going back to Maine. I am only a fourth year teacher, so I'm not a veteran, but I practically am because everyone else on my team is new. And two of them are leaving this year. I can't afford to live in Asheville City. I live out in Lester to get the apartment that I would have, that I qualified for, which is a one bedroom and costs 1,505 dollars a month. I did not qualify for it on my salary from the state or from the local supplement. Thankfully, I worked three other jobs, so I made enough to get that. If I had known how much it would cost to live in Asheville or what the school system would be like when I moved here, I probably wouldn't have. Because it's a lot and we don't feel super supported. So please actually let us know that you support us and you care about us. If you care about the LGBTQ community or part of our students, we support them. Show them you actually do. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Streimer. I am a member of the Asheville City Board of Education. And first off, I want to thank you. I realize that the budget proposal from the schools this year were big. And I appreciate the way each of you has considered carefully why we brought these asks. As many have already said, the reason we're here is because our state has become derelict in its duties. Lawmakers carefully and systematically are defunding public education and our children are bearing the burden. The governor has declared a state of emergency. It's not okay. This unconstitutional effort by lawmakers places the burden on you and county leaders like you around our state. It's not okay. As a newly elected member of the Board of Education, I'm ready to work with you for the long haul. Our students deserve adults who will work hard for them. I look forward to collaborating with you to leverage every resource we can for kids. Our work together will be steady and deliberate. We will find solutions together because we can do better. Jasmine said in the meeting with the proposals, "It's time for a frank conversation about what it takes to fund our priorities." I'm ready to have that conversation with you and work on structuring a system of education in our city that is sustainable and honors the dignity of the people who work in there and do what's right for kids. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Before we close the public hearing, I just want to say thanks to everyone who took time to come out and speak to us about our budget. It's one of the most important decisions that we make every year about how to invest the taxpayers' funds to meet the services and goals that our community has. So thank, thank you all for taking time to come out this evening. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:59 PM. And so in two weeks from now, we will be taking up deliberation on the budget itself. So the public hearing tonight is not the last step in the process, but it's one of the most important where we have another chance to listen to our community. So thank you all, obviously, a lot of the folks who came out working in public education. Thank you so much. I think, you know, I certainly speak for everyone on this board when we say we are, you know, very deeply concerned about where our state stands in terms of public education currently and some of the proposals that if enacted could further dismantle the whole financial model around how our public schools work. So anyway, thank you all for what you do. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Commissioners. Any questions? This was, we're not taking any action tonight. This was the hearing. So just before we move on to the next item, any? Anything else on this item? Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you again. Thanks to everyone. All right, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the County Manager's Report. And you're all welcome to stay, but don't feel obliged. Avril, do you have anything on the manager's report?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We have nothing under old business, under new business. The first item is Waste Pro Franchise, is consideration of an extension to the Waste Pro franchise. And Dane Peterson, our solid waste director, I think is going to help us out with this item. Is Dane here? He's coming. Okay, all right.
All right, sorry about the delay. Running through the hallways. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Good. Thank you for bringing up the slides. So my name is Dane Peterson. I'm the Buncombe County Solid Waste Director and here to provide an update on our waste and recycling collection contract in the county and also to seek direction from this board to allow staff to proceed with the Waste Pro franchise extension. So diving into some contract background, Waste Pro is our current service provider. The franchise collections contract began in January of 2020. This is a five-year contract with two, two, two-year extension options. And this service, scope of services for weekly trash and every other week recycling in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. This is not a mandatory program. This is a subscription base. So residents that elect to do that sign up for services and are eligible for this program. And currently, we have around 33,600 subscribers. And we're at a point now where we need to make some decisions with the contract. Excuse me. The, we, we do have language in the contract currently that requires the county to formally notify Waste Pro by August of this year if the extension option is the direction that we, we're looking to go. We could, that is, that is built into the existing contract, the extension options. They're a two-year and also considering two, two years to bring that to four could carry through December 31st of 2026 or 2028, depending on the extension option we, we go. And it's important to note too that extension can include renegotiation of services. And/or, this is, this in bold here, or another option is to seek competitive bids for these services that would need to be sent out by early, at the latest, early 2024 of next year with RFP. Strategy and Innovation helped us benchmark some other local, other markets that we felt like were pretty good comparisons. These are monthly rates, as you look in the chart. Henderson County, Forsyth, Guilford, Catawba. There, there are some similarities. We're, we're very unique. We're proud of that in a lot of ways, but it is a unique market in the collection industry as well. And looking at the $22.50 current rate, Buncombe County, we have for the subscribers, we feel like that is a competitive rate compared to what we see in other markets. So public outreach, we have conducted a couple of surveys in the past couple of years. Two of them that are highlighted here, the community-wide survey. We, we also built in some solid waste related questions into that survey. One of those, or a couple of those were around Waste Pro's service. The feedback we got in the survey was over 68% of the survey respondents were very satisfied or satisfied with Waste Pro services. The second survey listed here was the open survey. And parameters on that survey on questions were related to customer satisfaction or asking citizens if there was any recommendations or thoughts to additional services or modifications in, in the current services of the contract. Around 1,400 people took the, the open survey. And around 1,300 of the, 1,200 of those were current Waste Pro customers. First, the community survey results, again, reiterating that in the graph. 68% of the residents were satisfied or very satisfied with Waste Pro services. The open, open survey results, so this was open to all residents in the county. It showed kind of an even split with people that took the survey saying not satisfied compared to either satisfied or neither satisfied nor dissatisfied. Interesting feedback we got on some, on the question we asked about additional services or modification services with the existing contract. The, the top, I guess the top category that we heard feedback on was weekly recycling pickup. As we talked about, it's every other week now. This is something that we've heard feedback, I've heard feedback on since the start of the contract. It was a pretty massive transformation from previous to this contract where we were weekly, every week, blue bag system. And we transitioned that to cart-based collection, which is every other week. That is more typical that you'll see in most markets if you're providing like a 96-gallon recycled container than it is every other week. I'm not saying it doesn't happen that it's weekly, but that is more typical that it's every other week service. Also, Cassie was here presenting earlier tonight. The second most responded to category was composting collection. We hope through our efforts with citing these decentralized, our partners with City of Asheville, making accessibility to compost and recycling their residential food scraps, organics, we hope that's taken steps towards addressing that. Because it, we, we hear that a lot, you know, improving those services for organics. And followed by it kind of goes down from there. Yard waste pickup, bare bins, all the way down through the long driveway and home side pickup. Talking about contractor performance, Waste Pro performance, we, we track complaints received in our office. And when you think about when we started in the beginning of 2020, that's a lot of service events. That's every week, thinking 33,600 subscribers every other week for recycle. So that's to the tune of about 7.9 million service events to this point in the contract. We have levied liquidated damage fines. We have assessed $42,700 in fines. And those have been primarily associated with misservice or non-compliance items with the contract. The chart here, these are listing the categories year over year, or I'm sorry, the complaints. The key takeaway I take from this is we are encouraged to see the numbers are trending downward currently. That's, that's where we hope we would see that. Again, transformational change with how we pick up waste and recycle at the beginning of this contract. And people have made a lot of adjustments, not just the contractor, but our residents participating in this program have made substantial changes to, where do I put my cart? You know, how am I managing this? Where am I putting my cart for collection? So there have been a lot of adjustments on everybody's end and I think that has gone, that has gone very well. So again, encouraged to see where this trend is going with complaints. And the last liquidated damages finally assessed was in July of last year for 14,500. And again, that was for, for misservices. Conversation with Environmental Subcommittee, there was recommendation and support to use the existing contract extension option. And also recommendation to work with Waste Pro to negotiate certain terms of the contract identified through the outreach, i.e. the community survey. So next steps, obviously with the language, we want to notify Waste Pro of the county's intent. And second there is if franchise extension is selected, that will need to be approved in two of your regular meeting sessions to, to adopt that ordinance. Chip Jingles, knowledge, you, thank you for being here this evening. Waste Pro Regional Vice President. Appreciate what y'all do in the community, Chip. Thank y'all for your time. What, what questions can I try to answer?
Thank you for, for your work and for educating the Environment and Climate Committee through so many of our meetings. We've learned a lot in that committee about this and appreciate all the survey work that went into educating the public on this and, and our staff on what best practice is to improve upon.
I agree. We've, we've talked about this many times over the time on our Climate and Environment Subcommittee. So I know the staff has put a lot of work into this and, and we sincerely appreciate that. And we know that you'll continue to, to look at things and try to continue to improve that for our community. And we appreciate your diligence on that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to the 68% of customers who are satisfied, I want to thank you and Mr. Jingles as well that when customers do reach out to us with concerns, complaints, questions, you and Chip are both immediately able to respond and take care of those questions and concerns and missed trash pickup. And I think that explains why so many folks have been really pleased with the service that we're, they are receiving. So we really appreciate your detail to those concerns. Thanks. I know our constituents do as well. They may not thank you, but we often hear back from them and says, that was really fast. I can't believe how quick my issue was resolved.
We'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. And just to make sure we're clear, or at least to make sure I'm clear. The, so this is for the, to exercise the first extension option for an additional 24 months.
My, my recommendation is that we exercise two, two-year extension options that would extend it four years, Commissioner, Chairman.
Okay. So what I was, I want to make sure we're clear on the duration of the proposed extension. So we have two, we could, we could extend it for two years. So we have two, we could, we could extend it for two years or we could extend it for four years. Those are all on the table.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. And so going to the maker of the motion, can we just clarify your intent on that?
Yes. So I'm, I'm reading right here on the staff. So take appropriate actions to work with Waste Pro to extend the franchise for two additional terms for two years each. And this, the extension would be accomplished by passage of an ordinance to be approved by two regular meetings. And that was the motion, so.
Okay. You want to exercise both extension options?
Correct.
Now, for a total of four years. Okay. And the person who seconded, all right, great. All right. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Dane. Thanks, Chip. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have a couple of boards and commissions we need to address. First is the Ag Advisory Board. I'm sorry. Meeting schedule. Thank you. Okay. So this is an item we've been discussing at our recent meetings. Is there, I'm sorry, is this staff speaking on this or are we just following up on a? Okay. All right. Sorry for skipping over this.
Is the working intent to start this in August?
We don't have a first meeting of the month in July because of the holiday. So the first day, the first meeting of the month would be in August. The first Tuesday would be in August.
All right. So we've, we've discussed this at a couple of meetings. Any other, I think, I think the sense of the board was like, let's give this a try. And if we ever have a commissioner who joins the board who simply couldn't do this, you know, we'd probably need to, to adjust it, but it, people sounded open to this. So any further questions or comments on this? Or I guess we need to make an emotion to approve the adjusted schedule?
And I'd say.
Okay. Yep.
And we also, when we were talking about it, we said if, if at any time that we were concerned that we weren't providing good access to the public, then we would, of course, adjust it as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I feel like with that, that this entire board is very concerned about transparency and accessibility. And so if that ever becomes an issue, we would address it.
And just to clarify, this would affect five more meetings for the rest of the year. There is a schedule update that was listed on the agenda as well. And then if we're going to continue with this, then we would do a new meeting schedule that would be adopted at the beginning of the year.
I will make the motion to recommend adopting the new meeting schedule.
I'll make a second. All right. We have a motion and seconds. I guess maybe one clarification on the closed session. The, the regular meeting at the first Tuesday will be at 10:00 AM. And then we can have a closed session really anytime during that meeting that we wish, right? If we wanted to have it towards the beginning of that meeting or if we wanted to complete the business and then go into closed session afterwards, we, we can be flexible on when we do that. But unless we have a specially called closed meeting, closed session meeting, it would be sometime after that 10:00 AM convening of the regular meeting. Right? Right.
Brownie.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've had a lot of emails. I'm sure you all have seen them too. And you know, I'm at the point now, if it ain't broke, why are we fixing it? You know, I want to make sure that everybody, look, a lot of you, it doesn't affect me because I don't work. Well, I do for the commission. But for people who are working, this is tough to ask them to come in the morning. I think we ought to our constituents to make sure that they can come to meetings when we have them. But what bothers me with this, this makes it look like that, you know, we're going to make it difficult for some people to come to meetings. And especially the people who look like me, who are working. I mean, and when we talk about people who work at night, folks, I've worked at night. I've worked from 11 to 7. I know they aren't going to get up in the morning. They're tired, even when you work the second shift. But to me, it's more convenient the way we're doing it, folks. And I've thought about this, for more people to come to the meetings. And it's even more convenient for us as commissioners. Because, look, we're not full-time commissioners. This is a part-time job. If you look at the way, what I've worked for in years, I think I'm working for a penny hour compared to what I used to make. But, you know, I really, I, I just have a problem with us doing it because I want to see these commit, the meetings so that the majority of our constituents can come to them. But when we start moving them in the morning, that's not, I don't think that's going to be, I, I can't, I will not vote for it. I'll tell you that upfront.
All right. Anybody want to argue the other side?
Yeah.
I guess I, just my two cents, I, this doesn't feel like the kind of thing that I want to do without unanimous support just because it's so, I don't know, specific and both personal to us and important to the public.
Yeah.
But I, I guess I'd support it because I think it's a way to open up meetings to other people. And I can't, I don't have anything to prove that.
Right.
That's just a hunch. There's people that work nights, there's, there's parents that might be able to come in the morning as opposed to when kids get off school and you're making dinner, you know, I don't know. There's, there's all kinds of people that work all kinds of times and have all kinds of lifestyles.
Oh, yeah.
There's all kinds of circumstances. So that's why I, you know, generally support it as an option. But, uh, yeah, I don't really want to do it without all of us.
I, I agree. I would certainly want us to all be on the same page if we're proceeding, if we're proceeding with it. But likewise, I feel like there's the potential that it actually opens it up to more people to be able to come. And certainly, if that's not, if that did not prove to be the case, then, then we would want to, to go back to the previous schedule. But I do think, I mean, there's, there's folks, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Whitesides, but I was thinking that there would be those who work second shift or sometime that might be able to come, those families. Also, I think about, I hear from seniors who don't actually like to drive in the evening after dark. So there's those type of things as well. But, um, but if certainly if someone feels strongly the other way, I would not want to push this through.
I appreciate your comments on this, Commissioner Whitesides. When this was first discussed, you know, I, I expressed my concern alongside you that we would be limiting access to the public. And that, that concern does remain. And certainly as a, a person of white skin sitting here, I'm, I'm going to lean heavily on you and your thoughts around what this does to, as you said, folks that look like you. And that is certainly a concern that, that I will share alongside you. So thank you for bringing those to the forefront of the conversation.
Is it possible for us to receive more community feedback about that? Is that going to send anyone back? Because I, I would love to hear from the folks who actually are going to be affected by this. I, I can guess all day about what different folks are saying, but I do think if we're going to have the intent to do what's in the best interest of people, I'd love to hear more from what they're saying. If we can roll it to next meeting, I'm, I'd be open to that.
Great suggestion. I would support that.
Let's still next meeting. Yeah. Sure. We can definitely take, get more, get more feedback. I mean, I don't know if we've really, I actually, not sure I've gotten many emails about this, but the, people can definitely tell us what you think. Is this a good idea? Is this a bad idea? I mean, I think we all want, I mean, I think it's a sincere, you know, idea around like, is this, is mixing it up a bit, offering different times for public engagement better than always doing it at the same time? Um, yeah, I was very much on, kind of on the fence on this. I was kind of willing to give it a try, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's broken either. So, and, and this is not the only place to reach us either. People, people don't hesitate to, you know, call, email. Um, you know, I think people are pretty available to meet with groups too if they request meetings other times of the day. So, so I think if we're not going to act on this tonight though, we need you to withdraw your motion, Terry.
I will withdraw the motion.
Okay. And is that acceptable to you, Parker? Okay. So the motion's withdrawn. So this is an idea that is still out there, but I think we're not ready to take any action on it yet. So, uh, yeah, we would welcome any feedback on this. If there's any way this, you know, in any of our forums that we would in the future, I don't know if we can do it like over the next two weeks, but we, you know, when we do go out and kind of solicit public feedback, this would be a great one to incorporate into questions we're asking the community, what they would like to see. And maybe there's, maybe there's other, you know, maybe there's other opportunities too for some other, other public forums too that we hold sometimes to be at other times of the day too. So, all right. Anything else on this for now? I'd also just, in the survey or information that we put out there, remind folks that this is not intended to front-load really controversial topics. This is intended to be just informational, kind of testing out a new thing. So we're not going to secretly push stuff through a nine o'clock agenda. Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Well, thanks. Good discussion. And sometimes it's good to consider stuff and then realize, you know, what's good about the way you do it now. So keep doing that for a while. So, okay. Now we come to the boards and commission appointments. Ag Advisory Board for Farmland Preservation.
Motion to reappoint Charles Hubbard.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Strategic Partners Grant Committee. I'll move.
Motion to reappoint Elizabeth Ward and Mark Mickey.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Early Childhood Education and Development Fund Committee.
Motion to reappoint Mark Taft and Linda McDaniel.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And Economic Development Coalition. We've got five reappointments.
Motion to reappoint Allison, Andy, Ronde Russell, but let's correct that, Ronde Russell is Black Mayo, not being, um, St. Louis, and Gail Skelton.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That's all of those. All right. We have a couple of announcements. On June 20th at 3:00 PM. Yes, sir.
There is a new addition to the agenda, and that is the report on boards and commission that is listed, so.
And. Reports on the boards and commissions. Right. Okay. Thank you so much. This is new, so I'm jumping ahead. And I didn't look all the way down at the bottom of the screen. Okay. So, so this is an opportunity for members of the board to share any updates from our boards and commissions that we serve on, just for sort of the awareness of other board members. And if there's nothing to update on, that's totally fine, but this is just an opportunity for providing updates from the boards and commissions that we represent on. So I think I'll just start everyone on Amanda's side and go this way. And again, if anyone has anything they'd like to update us on, that would be great.
The update I had, you heard from Chris Smith himself this evening from the Sports Commission and the work of the task force. So I will continue to update you as more information comes forward on that.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................